My name is Andrew Robley and I'm a boardman for Auburn Junior High School. And I've been over there a few times, visiting, walking through the halls. And I've been very impressed by what I've seen in Mr. Drastel's class and some of the stuff that you guys are doing in technology. So I'm looking forward to his presentation today. And I have these pens, and I have one. So I think we all have one, so we could be in good company. I'd like to give you -- they say Auburn. And let's see, what's on it? Looks like a shooting star and a laurel wreath and a pen and some sort of document.
Can you tell us your name as well? Just kind of look into the camera.
Garry Gorney.
Are you Mr. Gorney's son?
He doesn't exist.
That's why you're here.
Olivia Avery.
Thank you.
Carly Harris.
Gabrielle Caswell.
Wonderful. Thank you, guys.
Is there anything you guys would like to share with us about what's going on at the junior high this year? How it's going? Any activities? I know the play's coming up or anything you'd like to share with us?
We have advanced technology classes this year.
Oh, that's great. Are you involved in it?
Yes.
What are some of the things you've been doing in the class?
We've been discussing about making an airplane at the end of the year, a remote control airplane. And right now, we're just doing the floor plans for our sketchup houses and what we're going to do on the computer.
Oh, that's great. Wonderful. How about anyone else? Anything else you'd like to share?
We did a ping pong project where we had to shoot a ping pong ball five feet into a weight basket with certain materials, and it was not easy.
Was it successful? Were you able to do it?
Sometimes.
See, this is how much things have changed. I used to get in trouble for doing that on purpose. You guys are getting credit for it, so.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moved.
Moved by Bill.
Seconded.
Seconded by Amanda. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Carry.
Do you have a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Amanda.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bill. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Carry.
4.0 verbal communication. Residents wishing to be heard. Any resident of the Auburn Park City School District is welcome to address the Board of Education on items pertaining to the education and/or the operation of school districts. There will be time provided on the agenda at this time. Any resident wishing to address the Board of Education is requested to come forward to the lectern and gain recognition and to give his or her name and address. Questions related to the employees of the district will not be permitted. Such questions should be referred to Superintendent at any time. Residents have been asked to sign an application and review their presentation to three minutes for less.
Do we have any residents this evening wishing to be heard? Any residents? Okay. Thank you.
5.0 Superintendent's reports. 5.1 Central New York School Board Association Upcoming Community Forum, February 4, 2014. Mr. Charles Porogonami, Executive Director.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
It's here.
It's always great to be in Auburn. You know, I would deny this to the other 48 school boards that we represent, but this is my favorite. Luckily, you're on camera. I'm going to send that to each door. Well, I'm going to have a Chris Christie problem here for our child. At any rate, thanks for giving me a few minutes tonight. And, you know, this is probably one of the few districts I don't have to visit about the event coming up, you know, on February 4th. But nonetheless, I first wanted to come out and thank Auburn for hosting the event at the West Middle School that night. For the districts that will be participating in your forum, the TST districts and the KU Ganada Bosse's districts, the location is perfect. Being here in Auburn is absolutely perfect for those districts to come. I just wanted to say a few words about that tonight, now that our legislative session has officially kicked off with the governor's state of the state last week. It's vital, and it's particularly vital this year, that through events like this, we not only get a great turnout for the event itself, but that we get folks motivated and out there, like you have done in Auburn for several years now. The event that's going to be happening on the 4th, Community Forum, this is something that we started doing last year. And by "we," I'm talking about the statewide school finance consortium and RIC. We did about 40 to 50 of these last year. And we really found that they were a great way of educating and motivating people, educating them on the key issues. And we only really had a couple that we're going to be talking about and that we're going to be asking folks to press on this year. But then also having a very spirited, actually fun program. We've got some fun things lined up for the program that I think will appeal to everybody who comes there. But our primary issues this year, first and foremost, we're calling for the eradication of the gap elimination adjustment in full this year, full period, full stop. At each of your places, I left a little spreadsheet. And I bought these tonight for a couple of reasons. First of all, this is the type of thing that Rick Timms, in doing his presentation, is going to be talking about. On the two basic issues we have, we wanted to put very, you know, user-friendly tools in your hands that you can use in your advocacy activities. And actually, the better of the two is the second page. If you flip to the second page here, this is your four-year history as a district on the gap elimination adjustment. And you'll see that your community has lost nearly $23 million that didn't come your way as a result of the gap elimination adjustment. And we've got a couple of key messages, arguments, if you will, that we'll be using in our advocacy efforts all over the state, okay? In the case of Auburn, what could your district have done with $23 million over the last four years? Just take a step back and think about that. But the other message that we really want to deliver, and we're starting to deliver it with some effect at this point, is that if you recall, back in the 2010-11 budget year, Governor Patterson actually was responsible for creating the gap elimination adjustment, which forced every school district in New York State essentially to kick back. It was withholding on your state aid. A percentage of your state aid was kept back in Albany to battle and help cut the state's $10 billion budget deficit at that time. Now, if any of you watched the governor's state of the state message last Wednesday, one of the things that he was literally breaking his arm patting himself on the back for is that when he took over, he had an $8 billion budget deficit. And low and behold, this year, we have a $2 billion budget surplus. So the key question there is, if there's a surplus, why do you need a gap elimination adjustment anymore? And that's the message that we're going to be pressing strongly. We're in the process of putting together a real, real powerful statewide coalition from all parts of the state, including the New York City suburbs and Long Island are going to be joining with us in this effort. They're already on board publicly as supporting gap elimination adjustment eradication this year. Given the fact that it's an election year, we think we've got some added leverage in this, and this is our primary issue. But to do so, we've got to engage in every part of the state. Rick Timms, of course, will be our primary speaker at this. You think you've seen Rick get pumped up and in the zone. When he does these events, he gets in the zone like you never have seen him before. He gets just really, really enthusiastic, even more so than what you've seen. Some of the other things that we're going to do at the event, we're going to have a really inspiring video that we're producing, that we're going to show. And we're going to have a novel, and I'm not going to get into the specifics of it, but we're going to have a little novel advocacy activity that everybody can do from their seat that evening at the event. You'll be seeing more about this as we go along, certainly if you're there that night. A key to this being a successful event, and this is one reason why I'm out on the road between now and the 4th with boards and other organizations, is while we can depend on everybody here tonight to be on board and active and participating, we've really got to have our communities involved. We must have folks from the communities involved. Indeed, each district of our four Bosse's has been tasked with sending a delegation, you know, to the meeting. And very much would love to get every district to get 15, 20 community people there. And that can be moms, which you're all familiar with in this district, and how, you know, what great advocates your moms can be, but certainly parents, grandparents, booster club members, your PTA, business people in the community, you know, anyone who's a voter, who lives in the community, who cares about kids, who cares about their schools. You really got to get them involved because those are the folks that the legislators really pay attention to at the end of the day, more so than they pay attention to us, frankly. You know, we're viewed largely by the legislators as being vested interests. So we need folks from the community to participate. And that's my primary reason for being here tonight, is to really urge your efforts in getting as many folks from Auburn to be over at the West Middle School on February 4th, for what I think is going to be an interesting, great learning opportunity and actually a fun evening. I think everybody's going to get pumped up by this. So with that, I won't take any more of your time. If you've got any questions about the event or any of the issues, you know, that we're going to be confronting this year, I'm happy to answer those if I can.
What time?
It's going to start at 6:30. One of the hard and fast rules we've learned by doing about 60 of these so far is at 6:30 to 8:30. Start right at 6:30 and end right at 8:30. You know, fewer than more speakers, and try to keep things rolling along, keep it interesting, get in, get out type of thing. Anyone else? Okay. I look forward to seeing you all on the 4th, okay?
Thank you, Charlie.
I recently spoke with Mr. Schmidt, the advisor for the Madras United Nation Club. This past weekend, they went to Syracuse University Conference. They sent 45 high school students, and there were about 800 high schoolers there with them. In this club, they do mock debates on current issues, and they overall performed extremely well. He wanted to give special recognition to Dan Cummings, who won the Malawa Yussuf Fassi Award for Advocacy, representing Russia in Special Political Committee. And then in three special committees, Zane Karns won an honorable mention award representing Russia in a Security Council, Taylor McLean representing Minister, Defense in Russia and Cabinet, and Bridget Carter representing Russia in the Commonwealth of Independence. They also did excellent in their compete -- they were competing. And there's another conference on March at St. John Fisher. So we're hoping that they do well again.
Thank you for sharing that with us. You take it Jordan's at a meet or something this evening? Yeah, he had a meet tonight. Always nice to see you. Thank you.
5.3 Summer School Radio. Ms. Evelyn and Mr. Moon.
Recently, we were asked to take a look at the budgets that all of us submit as component districts within the region for PE, DA, and the Bosse's. And before doing that, our team in Auburn always, I'm sure long before I got here, takes a look at how we are spending our money with Bosse's and whether or not we're getting the best bang for our buck, with lack of a better way to put it. What kind of results are we getting for our students relative to the programs that we're engaging them in? So, you know, we did look at the summer school budget, and we did look at data related to summer school. And so that's some of what you'll be seeing this evening in terms of illuminating, again, how our students are faring within the current summer school model, which is a very typical Unfortunately, if you just go back one.
Sure.
Unfortunately, I think the last thing that I would say about it, in terms of it being a typical summer school model, is that it is a wait-to-fail model. Right? So when students fail, if they have enough seat time, then they are asked to sit for six weeks to retake a course. And so in terms of what we would like to see in Auburn, in terms of a more innovative approach to summer learning, is for us to reimagine what learning can look like in July and August. And you will see that I purposely did not use the term "summer school." Okay? So that's sort of just a -- just want to frame our discussion. Mr. Moon and I gave this presentation on December 18th to the entire region, including all superintendents, all high school principals, and all middle school principals. We started with our mission statement because that's where we always start in Auburn and want to make sure that all of our actions are aligned with the end goals that we have presented within this statement. And so just sort of a broad data review of our summer school results from last year include that students that were sitting in classes where they were trying to recover credit, we had a 66% rate of success. Students that were taking new courses, we had a 79% rate of success, and you see driver's ed and physical education is above 90%. Mr. Moon's going to talk about the next slide. Will you disaggregate that data just a bit for you?
We took a look at the slots that we pay for for summer school and the students that successfully gained credit as a result of being in that slot. And that's where we came up with our percentages. Again, driver's ed is very successful. PE is very successful. And we have some students that are taking new courses, typically seniors looking to take economics and government and those half-year social studies classes at the high school. And again, the students that are involved in that did very, very well. Where we saw students fall down a little bit, those that signed up for exam only without any level of review is a part of that. And obviously, that's not really that surprising if they weren't successful in June to turn around in August without some level of intervention and reteaching held that they didn't do very well. Same thing with our review classes. Our review class met with little success and with about, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of 25 to 40% success rate, depending on which aggregate group we look at. As we look at poverty and special ed, the numbers come down quite a bit. And that's really what we see on whole. Our numbers for summer school, the students of poverty struggle a little bit more than our non-poverty students, and our special ed students struggle a little bit more than our regular ed students. So not a lot of surprises here, but again, if we can identify students who are not successful in this traditional summer school program, courses that they're traditionally not successful with, we can tailor a new experience to address that student population in those courses that traditionally give our students some problems.
And so again, on that day on December 18th, we talked about a paradigm shift, providing students with the credits they deserve while maintaining the highest levels of engagement. Some of my comments included that even when we talk about summer school, generally speaking, and I don't mean to make broad sweeping generalizations, but, you know, there's often a sort of negative connotation attached to students and perhaps their families that have to engage in summer school. There has been talk in the past, at least I can only speak for myself, in the tables that I've been sitting at over the last 20 years, that perhaps the student didn't do something, which is why they're sitting in summer school. They didn't complete their work. They were not successful on their quizzes and tests, et cetera. But the conversation is often focused on students and their families, and over time has rarely been focused on other things, other factors that might be impacting their ability to be successful during the school year. So we'd like to turn around that sort of thinking just a little bit. So what is the purpose of our trying to shift again to thinking about learning in the summers, to recapture those students that, again, have historically shown that this model is not working for them? Right? And, you know, I shout it from the rooftops that poverty is on the rise in Auburn. And if we know that, and we know that this model is not working with our lower socioeconomic students, we should, I think, be compelled to do something different, or at least to think about doing something different. So we'd like to recapture our students with disabilities, those students that have low attendance for a number of reasons again. And many of these issues or many of these subgroups, they're duplicates, so to speak. So there are many of our students are, can be in all of these categories, the same student, right? A low socioeconomic student who has been identified as a student with special needs, who has an attendance problem. We also want to sort of try to, again, make sure that we're targeting those students that need credit recovery because they are falling behind their cohort, the students that, in other words, their peers that they entered ninth grade with, they are falling behind, they will not graduate with them if we don't assist them in gaining enough access to credit so that they can progress in a timely manner, and those students that need learning recovery. And we'll talk about learning recovery just a little bit more. So time is the variable in a new model. In the old model, in the more typical model, you show up for six weeks. You show up for the full six weeks, no matter what, no matter how much learning you need to recover, or by how much you failed, et cetera. In the typical model, you show up for six weeks and you sit for six weeks. In the model that we would like to explore, time is the variable. And so students can work at their own pace at an independent level, and learning is the constant. And so if you're -- students don't meet with success during the school year for a number of reasons. Some of them are related to ability, and some of them are related to other things that can or maybe or not within that student's control. And so maybe they learned the material. Maybe they know it, but they didn't pass any of the exams. Maybe they know it and they didn't attend enough, again, to earn the credit. So with this model, students are in an online environment. They have to take a sort of a --
Pre-test.
Thank you.
Yeah.
A pre-test. And the online environment will place them at that point in the curriculum where they need to be, right? Where they need to recover the learning. So it is sort of a flipped experience. Any good model, that's sort of a credit recovery model that hasn't this hybrid model where there's an online piece and where there's a certified teacher in the room, any good model is supported by content specialists. So if a child is sitting in a global studies classroom, there'll be a certified teacher, a certified social studies teacher in the room with them. Other districts have tried to do this kind of work without the support of a certified teacher, and it has failed miserably. And so we would not recommend that. Again, the other piece too about the typical model, in terms of you're there for six weeks, what if you're not successful again? You have spent six weeks in your summer. You have put your best effort forward. Let's just say this is a child who's really, you know, working hard at this, and they've spent six weeks, and now they don't recover the credit. That's not a model that I think, again, is conducive to 21st century, sort of 21st century environment. And also, at the end of it, what's in it for them? Right? How do we help them understand? How do we send them the message that six weeks in our classroom, really trying your best, really counts for something? Right? So with this model, they can take the time that they spent in the summer and extend that into September. They continue to work online until they reach mastery, until they show mastery within this particular program with a content area teacher, again, to earn the credit. So their time won't be spent for nothing.
One of the things, regionally, as a result of the meeting that we had, that Ms. Evelyn had mentioned, we are forming a subcommittee, and the work of that subcommittee is really sort of outlined on this slide. So one of the things that we need to do, there are multiple vendors that offer some form of an online platform with online tutorials and pre-tests and so on. So we want to select a software or a platform that all the region schools can utilize. We're going to need to work with teachers and administrators and counselors to come up with criteria to select students that would be beneficial to be in a program like this. Because some of this learning is independent, because some of it is, a portion of it is online, very often if we see students that don't read on grade level, they may find some of this very difficult to do independently. And so we need to develop that criteria so that the students that we place in this program are targeted. We need to prioritize our admission so that we really want to start with the students that are most in jeopardy of not graduating on time, and then work our way as we fill those slots backwards to our freshmen. Again, we've taken a look at our data, trying to identify courses that historically presented those barriers to graduation. So again, the courses that we offer, first to the online, and are targeted to those specific courses. Again, the number of sections that we might offer, the number of slots we offer are going to be dependent on our need. And then, obviously, we have to let parents know, counselors know, schools know exactly what's going on with the program, what changes are implemented, selection criteria, as I mentioned before, that goes along with that, so that there's some, you know, general knowledge about it, buy-in from, you know, because we're looking to do this regionally, so it's not just Auburn, but it hopefully will be the entire region that benefits from this change to a summer school program.
It's been our experience, Mr. Moon and mine and others, who have created programs like this, because there are many school districts that have offered this kind of learning environment in the summer. So I don't want you to think that Auburn would be the first, or that this part of the region would be, you know, initiating this kind of learning environment. But what we've found over time is that, obviously, physical education, it can become a challenge to do online, and so, you know, again, it becomes a hybrid model. Science labs, making sure that students are completing the requirements for those science courses that require a lab, did present a challenge. We were able to overcome it, but we thought, you know, in this presentation, that we'd be upfront about those things that had to be problem-solved around. Access to technology at home and at school. We found that most students did have access to technology because this is a web-based program. But again, those students and families that don't have access to the technology, we have to make an accommodation for them. And teacher training and curriculum alignment, in terms of it being a challenge, I would say that once the teachers, at least that we worked in a couple of districts, understood that they could, within the online environment, customize the courses so that, you know, it was still the same course that our students were engaging in, still the same requirements, still the same level of rigor, and training them in the program in particular, because really they were the ones that were inputting that information with our help, that challenge really sort of diminished. challenge really sort of diminished very, very quickly.
And with respect to the, the curriculum alignment, is, you know, we've been talking sort of that summer school model, the credit recovery model, but ultimately to move towards that learning recovery model, if the curriculum has a tight alignment, and I'm, I'm a teacher and I have a student that did not do well on the first unit, if that first unit is in the online software and is aligned to what I've just covered in my classroom, I now have an opportunity to assign that student that unit so that they can recover that learning during the course. We're not waiting for the student to fail at the end of the year, but they can recover that, that, those grades and that learning immediately following that unit. It gives an opportunity for AIS teachers and Avenue to present them with, with content that is tailored specifically to that student and where they are. So again, using it for something maybe other than credit recovery out into the future, but learning recovery.
I have one, maybe two.
Okay.
Can you talk to us for a minute about the, the difference between credit recovery and new learning? I'm curious as to how, how does the educational experience correlate between a student who takes a course for new credit for six weeks in the summer versus a student who receives that instruction from September to June? It would seem that they're, they're quite different. The amount of education you're going to receive from September to June is a lot different than what you're going to receive in six weeks. I'm curious as to how that works for new credit.
There, there is a online, online, there is a time requirement for, that's different for students that are doing it as a recovery credit versus students that are taking it as a new credit, so that it's not, it's not the, time-wise, the same experience for somebody that's recovering the credit versus somebody that's taking it new for the first time. And I think we're, what may trip up some of those students that are, and the reason why maybe we're not seeing pass rates what we would think for a student that's jumping in and taking, you know, econ or, or government for the first time, is the, the speed at which that course travels and covers the curriculum, the pacing of it during the summer. So I think some students may find the pace one of the things that may trip them up during the summertime.
Okay. And then for students who are taking it for new credit, are, are they taking it for new credit because for whatever reason they didn't have that opportunity during their normal school year, or is this an opportunity for a student to maybe say, that's kind of a harder course, I would rather take it in the summer because I, perhaps it's perceived to be easier, or is this a student that you, we're letting them take it for new credit because they need this course to graduate and they haven't had an opportunity to take it?
We, we've got both, okay? So we have some students that are taking econ and government to free up a period in their senior year because they missed a different course that they need to retake during their senior year, and they, they need to free up a slot in their schedule to, to fit that in. We also have students that are taking econ and government to, to create a larger block, so maybe a work-study program or something like that, or CTE or something along those lines in the afternoon. And I know that we've got students that are, are taking it so that they can get into maybe an AP class or something and make sure that they have that slot available during their senior years. We, we do have a mix of, of reasons why students might, might want to jump in.
Can I just share?
Sure.
We have timing for this, so a retake, per the summer school handbook from the state education department, is 20 hours of instruction, okay? And the new teaching is 45 hours, and those classes that Tim is referring to, those are half-credit classes, where the credit recovery could be full-credit classes, so there's a real distinction between 20 hours for credit recovery, what they refer to as a retake, as opposed to the 45 hours for half of the credit, so a semester course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
After you presented this to the OSIs, what was the reaction? Did you get feedback from other superintendents, or?
Yes, I have received much feedback actually, it was very positively received. And right at the meeting, Mr. Speck, district superintendent, asked for, again, a small subcommittee to be formed to study the issue so that we could pilot a program this summer for the region.
I have one more question. How many students could this potentially affect for this subgroup?
That's dependent on, on budget, and, and in terms of, you know, what program we pick and how many licenses we have. It's depending on access to technology, it's depending on a number of things. I don't know if you would add something to that, Tim?
I think it's going to be dependent on space. One of the advantages in my previous experience, I served as a summer school principal that used a blended model like this, and so the lab that we were in had 25 machines in it, so we could have up to 25 students that were in the blended in one particular session. We did run two sessions, so we were able to, to do 50 different students through that experience. And the nice thing is, even though I may have had a certified math teacher in there for math, out of those 25 students, I could have geometry students, I could have algebra students, so it wasn't always the same, it was always the same subject, but not always necessarily the same course. So again, trying to select students and target students that we thought could be successful in that program, but you can have multiple subjects going on at the same time. We had some that we knew were much higher, you know, our, our history, our U.S. history seemed to be one of those courses that hung students up, so we actually had U.S. history students that were in the first session and second session, and the social studies teacher worked an hour of the first session and an hour of the second session, so that they were able to work with both, both students, or students that were in both sessions.
Matt?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Five point four, of the Capital Project, Larry Baruchia, superintendent of the Department of Defense.
Are you going to use this? No. Hello, everyone?
Hello. Hey, Larry.
I can't say that the, the list is getting smaller. That's a good thing. And just so we know, this list is, is, it's all about substantial completion, not, it isn't by no means a punch list. We haven't even started most of them yet for the punch list. So start with the high school. Things that are remaining for contractors, installation of the remaining hardware for the helametal doors, not quite complete. Installation of exterior doors, we've got about 40% complete, getting better by the day. Painting of existing doors and frames in the stairwells. We still have infamous doors, the 168 new wood doors, they actually, now the delivery date is January 23rd. They have not, as far as, I've called the factory a couple of times and they're on schedule. So these doors, when they arrive, they're going to start putting them in, hopefully we're going to start getting a few at a time, maybe we'll get some before the, the January 23rd date. We still have the follow-up testing on the patio roof that we put on both ends, there's some dialector testing that they have to do. The weather kind of stopped them because it got really cold and snowy, and the good news is our, our warranty hasn't started until that testing is complete, so they were installed at the end of the summer, and just, you know, we haven't even started the warranty on it. So that's a good thing. We still have installation of magnetic hold opens for a lot of the doors, the bathroom doors. Obviously, we can't put those in until the doors are installed, so we really can't get ahead of that. So, and that's, that's about, that's just about it for the high school. Alasko, we still have the canopy ramps to do, I checked, all the piping is done, but the ramps, they haven't been completed yet, and they need to complete the security alarm wiring for the canopy doors that they installed. The wiring is, it's connected so we can secure the building, but it's not connected to the two new doors. So that has to be completed. Sewer, it's real small, just to trim up, trim and touch-up paint for recently installed wooden bars, the bathroom, the handicap bathroom that we did. Herman Ave, we've installed PTAC units, they were completed over the vacation, over the break, and they still need to be, just some touch-ups on the walls, has to be done by the, the general contractor, that's not complete. The junior high school, we have the auditorium curtains and the shades, the shades will be installed on the day, we have Martin Luther King Day, that's, that's going to be a vacation day, so we're going to install them that day, and then the curtains, they're going to be, they're going to follow, because they'll, they're going to have to set up all the scaffolding to put the, put these shades up, and we're going to leave it right there so we can continue on with Cirque du Stade, they can come in and put those, the new curtains up. So that'll kind of work out at the same time, or soon after. And we also have a drain line that still needs to be installed in the crawl space for the sprinkler system at the junior high school. Casey, we have some minor touch-ups around the projected room in the auditorium, hasn't been completed yet, they, they had to finish a little trim. It wasn't really in the specs, it wasn't in the work, but they're going to do it for us anyways, so that's a good thing. Administration building, we, the roof is complete, but we're trying to, we still have the security doors to install, the fob doors, we have two, two to five doors going in, and we selected the upgrade on the galaxysystem, and once they, once that goes through, we'll, we'll start installing those fob doors. Okay. ME, ME engineering, we're in the process of completing a punch list for plumbing and HVAC systems. They have completed the electrical punch list, which they just did, they submitted it to SWVR for review, and actually I haven't even got a copy yet, I should be getting a copy tomorrow, so I can kind of go through it and make sure we're on the same page for this electrical punch list. As to, we still have to complete, like I say, the plumbing and the HVAC, SWOBR has to complete the architectural yet. That's something that I'm going to be going with them around doing that punch list. Change orders, at this point, it looks like we've, we're pretty much down to change orders. We have three outstanding change orders that we have to complete. One is the gas tran upgrade for the burners at the high school here. One is the transfer of the ducts in the gym, at the high school gym here, return air change for ducts. They have to be completed, and there's two smoke detectors in the maintenance shops that, that we have to complete. As far as CNS, they're, they're telling me that the substantial completion date will be by the end of February, which includes all the doors at the high school. So then, then we'll start, but we'll be doing our punch list in between all that, so we should have something before they're done, but in the, in the end of February, we should have a good, good steal of the punch list after it's done, so. Any questions?
Where we at with the stair treads at Auburn High School? I know we had discussion, the sewers about grinding them down there, how did you make that?
At the junior high school?
Yeah.
We did that.
All set.
That is all set.
Okay. And then, let's see, other thing, it was, then, how about the, the hood removal in this building? Where we at on that?
I've got a work order in for our people to remove the hood.
That's just right there, first level, nothing else.
Right.
Okay.
We'll cap it off above the ceiling, and leave the ductwork going through the roof.
Good. And also a comment on your shirt, a lot of people don't know that our maintenance department is wearing these shirts. Serves a couple of purposes, one is very professional-looking, two, it also identifies our maintenance workers in the building, and they're, believe it or not, there are some people who see our guys walking around, don't know who they are, now you can tell. And it's a, it's a nice step forward, and I think it's money well spent.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any issues, HVAC issues during the cold weather, everything, everything that's new work? No? Okay. There are a few bugs in the system, huh? You know, they, we changed over a lot of controls with, with the energy project along with the capital project, so yeah, we had some issues, and there's still a few wrapped, I mean, you know, we, we did some rooms that were overheating and some that weren't, that were cold, and it was all due to controls, and the controls company has been, they've been working pretty steadily now, I think they've gotten pretty much under control. We've changed a lot of the program around, we had to do a lot of programming changes, so.
Okay. And one more thing, I hope the public takes notice of the new drapes here in our auditorium, along what we're doing, it's very beautiful, and soon to be completed at Auburn Junior High School. We've got some of the best auditoriums in the entire country, as far as I'm concerned, they're beautiful, and when Auburn Junior High School's complete, that, that room's going to be stunning. So I want the public and, and our staff to take notice because it's a nice upgrade. Thank you.
How's that? Thanks.
Five point five, school comprehensive education plan at Auburn Junior High School, Mr. Oliver.
Good evening, Mr. Oliver.
Good evening. Okay, first of all, I'd like to thank Auburn for this opportunity to go over the Auburn Junior High School's school comprehensive education plan, also to highlight some of the really good things that we're doing in our building, and to offer some suggestions on how the board can help Auburn Junior High School reach its goals. During this process, we had a school self-assessment team, and they came up with several recommendations. I'm going to talk about two of the major recommendations. The first one is regarding our curriculum, and making sure that it is aligned with the Common Core learning standards, and is delivered in all of our classrooms, so it wouldn't just be in, in math and, and English, but how can, how can science and social studies and art, technology, support the Common Core learning standards? The school self, self-assessment team also determined that we need to create a process for data collection and analysis, so that it can inform all teachers with their findings and help guide instruction. So we really want to go to a data-driven instruction model for our building. First goal for recommendation number one is to make sure that our curriculum is intimately aligned with the Common Core learning standards. One of the advantages at Auburn Junior High School is, is we have a schedule where the, the core area teachers meet twice a week for department planning time, and they can examine and analyze the Common Core, make sure that their lessons are aligned. They also utilize monthly department meetings and staff development days to create a, a pacing schedule for their curriculum. We started this in, in 2013 of creating a, examining the Common Core, uh, I'm getting old, I'm starting to need glasses here. Appropriately aligned with the curriculum and plans to approve, improve their subject. We're going to continue with the department team meetings to examine and analyze the Common Core, utilize these meetings, pacing calendars, and we are going to have set up days where there's vertical planning time between the sixth and the ninth grade, teachers with our teachers, so that we have that vertical alignment, so that our students are, the scope is gradually building each year, and there's a spiraling of, I guess, skills that the students will get each year they go through the junior high. For recommendation number, number two, staff is going to be using assessment tools to identify patterns in student learning, and they can adjust their instruction to those. Right now, we're using Star Reading. Star Reading is a, is an online program where students' ability, our reading abilities are assessed, and it gives suggestions on how teachers can, can find those areas of weaknesses and, and help the students grow in their reading. Also, all of our teachers are doing baseline assessments, cognitive, informative tests, which are using ELA math, science, and social studies. One of the things with Auburn Junior High School, we have, we have five teams, each one of those teams has four core area teachers, so to ensure that our teachers are delivering a, a common equitable curriculum, they need those assessments so they can see what skills are testing each of their students and seeing what areas they're falling short in. We've also implemented a, a collection plan and data-driven dialogue meetings where, on a monthly basis, or when other term assessments are given, I meet with the teachers along with Stacy Kung- and seeing what areas they're falling short in. We've also implemented a collection plan and data-driven dialogue meetings where, on a monthly basis, or when other term assessments are given, I meet with the teachers, along with Stacy Cummings, our Director of Instruction. We look at the results of those assessments. We find if there's any gaps that we need to prove upon, and to make sure that it is aligned with the Common Core. Some of the highlights for teacher practices and decisions. One of the really neat things that has been going on is our art, our technology teachers, home careers, and health teachers, why they know how they can help the ELA and math teachers meet the Common Core. And they've been working together to look at their own curriculum and see what skills that they can reteach or, I guess, reinforce in their classrooms. And a picture right here is an example of that getting done. In one of our art classrooms, students had to use some computer programs to come up with a design. This is a pop art program. And they had to come up with some of the methods some of the pop artists have used over time. And create their drawings, as you can see on the right. But it didn't just end there. They had to look up those individual artists, write a brief summary of the artists on their ideas and how they came about their thinking. Another thing that we're working on is to really keep an eye on our students' social and emotional developmental health. We do that in a variety of ways. We follow the second step curriculum, which is a curriculum about making good choices that's taught by all the teachers on a revolving basis. We have a bully locker. So if students feel that they're getting bullied, there's a locker in one of the hallways where it's painted, and it's very distinct. Students, if they want to leave an anonymous note to let us know if they're having some issues with other students, we can look into it. Our SRL checks it every day. So we get an idea of if there are any kids having problems. As a student services team, I meet weekly with the two school counselors, the school psychologist, the SRL, my assistant principal. And we discuss any students that need any help. How can we link them up with some assistance by some outside communities? Or any interventions our classroom teachers can put in place so that they're helped out. Another thing that we do, unfortunately, one of the issues we've had to deal with often is students that have threatened suicide. And we have a team in place, and we follow the Lifelines Curriculum, which, it's just a, it's a process that we follow that everybody's notified, that the counselors are checking in on the kids, that the counselors are checking with any outside services the students have provided, so that we're on the same page and we can make sure that these kids are safe. So this is one of the things that we take seriously on how to have a safe and orderly environment in our building and making sure that all of our kids are safe. The last thing I'd like to highlight is family and community engagement. The first thing, with the use of a school tool now, our parents have access to student grades. They can see how the students are doing on a, basically, right that minute that they go into the parent portal. Each of our grade level teams meet three times a week to discuss student issues and to make parent contacts. We stress the need to contact parents whenever there is an issue coming up, or to let parents know when a student's doing very well in the class. Another thing that's come up with the family and community engagement, and that's gonna help us greatly, is that we've been awarded the Community Schools Grant. And with the Community Schools Grant, there's gonna be opportunities for our school to be a community hub. And not only will we have time for students to work on project-based learning-type activities, but there will be opportunities for adults to come in for parenting advice. There'll be mental health screenings. There will be, there will be opportunities to work with QDA jobs. So there's a great deal of work that's gonna take place in the next few weeks for the second semester to get this rolling. But it's just another way that we, as a, you know, as a school district and as a school, we're reaching out to community organizations to help our kids. As far as things that the school board can help us with. I talked about Star Reading. There's a web-based program. Our teachers use other web-based programs like Movie Max to help assess whether students are reading. The Wi-Fi capabilities of our building has improved, and I appreciate how that's been done. It's really helpful. And as we rely more and more on these types of technologies, we need to keep fostering and maintaining that infrastructure. The next highlight, which is, I'd like to bring Mr. Drastle up here. We have Mr. Drastle and Mr. Powers and a few of our students. And they're gonna talk about our technology program. And it's, some of the stuff that they're doing is amazing. And, you know, there's a lot of potential to do even more. And I'd love to see our school be able to do those things. And I'm gonna show a quick video.
Hi, folks. I'm Matt Drastle. I'm one of the technology teachers at the junior high. I work with George Powers, who works there full-time, and also Kevin Kessler, who works our first two bells at the junior high before he heads down to the high school to teach technology down here. What's becoming more and more important for the junior highs is to get, give the students more exploratory things to do and to expose them to a lot broader range of technology that we have nowadays. And Mr. Robby went and visited us at the junior high, and he suggested that. Well, he put together a movie about the things, that kind of things that we do now in technology, both in seventh and eighth grade, and also things that we would sort of like to do in the future, because the technology is going that way. So I have a little bit of five-and-a-half-minute video to show you. On the video, you'll see at the bottom, to discriminate between what we do now and what we do in the future, it'll say current curriculum is what we do now. And you'll see some of the projects, and there's some interviews from some of the students. And then on the bottom, you'll see future? Question mark, question mark, about things that we'd like to do in the future. And things that are totally practical and things that we'll be able to do. One of the things I'll set up is, as one of the ladies suggested, one of the things we did was, it's a constructivist project. We give the kids a big table full of materials that they can use. And we gave them a goal that they had to build a machine that would sit on the table and shoot a ping-pong ball into a basket five feet away, five times in a row. All right? And that's the only instruction they were given. And you'll see two different successful solutions. And if you take a look at the solutions, you'll see they're very, very different. And it just shows that there's many different ways to become successful. Right? So I'm gonna show you about a five-and-a-half-minute video to show you.
My name's Samantha. And our other partner is... And we need this technology. And we were inspired by a golf club. So, hold this back, level it out. Launch a ping pong ball five feet into a...
Hi, I'm Jack.
Hi, I'm Jack.
And we were successful in designing this machine that successfully launched a ping pong ball into a basket five feet away.
Hi, my name's Ashara. And I'm drawing a house I designed in...
Hi, I'm Brooke. And a major project from seventh grade is designing and making a CO2-powered racecar. I'd also like to design and make vinyl stickers for cars.
Hi, I'm Melissa.
I'm Addison.
I'm Lori.
I'm Ariana.
I'm Jack.
I'm Matt.
I'm Jake.
We went to the college and used GPS units to map out the nature trail.
Hi, I'm Culver.
Hi, I'm Tricia.
Hi, I'm Caitlin.
We did a windmill project to see how many volts we could get. We got about one and a half. We all worked as a team together and had a lot of fun.
Hi, I'm Gavin. In the future, I'd like to build a remote-control plane out of foam board from the dollar store. Or how about a flying wing that I can use as a drone?
Hi, I'm Marguerite.
Hi, I'm Eric. And we would really like to design and build a autopilot project.
This is gonna fly the exact same as a quad. Plenty of power? Yeah. It's even a little gusty today, too. So, just wish this was stable.
Hi, I'm Bianca. And this is the future. We'd like to build a remote-control plane using FPV goggles, which stands for First Person View.
Hi, I'm Emma. I'd really like to learn how to make an iPhone app and put it on the App Store.
Hi, I'm Jennifer.
And I'm Lauren. And in technology, in the future, we would like to learn about electronics.
Hi, I'm Cooper. And I'm exploring ways to use this Arduino's microcomputer by code. There are rigid grammar rules, and correct spelling is a must. It's fun to see my project come to life.
Thank you very much. Well done.
First thing, I have to say, I am blessed to have such a tremendous team working at Auburn Junior High School. And the video is just great, and it just shows all the types of things that the kids are doing to, you know, learn the 21st century schools of creative, creativity, critical thinking, collaboration, communication. And at the junior high, it's, the way I look at it, it's kind of a buffet table where students are getting exposed of a variety of different things. So when they go to the high school and they can specialize more, they're just gonna be more open to just learning those types of things. So that's what we're doing in technology, but it just also shows how we can use what they're doing in those classes and link it to the Common Core learning standards. So, are there any questions for me?
The students made that video, is that correct?
We do a lot of video production in the eighth grade. We had about four days to finish this, so they didn't do a whole, I did most of it over the weekend.
Right. But I did see these videos that they did make.
Yeah, this quality, if we had longer time, certainly. They could've done the production, the editing part, the filming part, and also the upfront part. Also, actually, right now, they're just finishing a short movie. And their next project is to do a two-minute movie on some subject of their choice. And they'll be doing everything, script writing, storyboarding, filming, and also the editing, sound effects, background music, everything.
One of the things I just want to commend you guys for is, first of all, for the four of you sitting through all those PowerPoint presentations. But also, just the use of the programs, iMovie, SketchUp. When I visited, I was speaking to Mr. Drastle and Mr. Oliver about this, that in my job, I'm a glorified janitor, right? But I use all these things, all these graphic design skills, code, you know, web code, all these things. And so, as far as being a 21st century skill, I can attest to that in just about any position that I'm familiar with, and speaking to mine again. These skills are gonna be an expectation, I think, for just about any position. And so, I just think it's great that you guys, you students, are getting this training here at this level, because even people my age, you know, I didn't get to learn these skills until later on after high school. Any kids could play a Saturday here?
That was over the future.
I got the smaller radio and a stereo. First, I can't see it, and two, I can't hold my hand tight enough to do it. Which is why I saw you guys doing that. That's pretty technical stuff. So, give me a call.
I'll give you one more suggestion for a future one as well. The idea that you had of putting the materials on a table and having them create a machine, you know, to launch a ping-pong ball or something like that. That is the philosophy behind a program called Odyssey of the Mind. Have you heard of that program? You guys would sure make one great junior high Odyssey of the Mind team if you had a coach. So just kinda keep that in mind. You know, that would be a great thing for the technology to put together an Odyssey of the Mind team. You'd do fantastic in that program.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. It was a wonderful presentation. And thank you to our students for joining us this evening. It was wonderful.
Thank you.
Five point one, Board Link Update, Auburn Junior High School. Mr. Oliver, I have some questions to ask.
Well, this, what we just saw was what I was interested in, and that's why I asked Mr. Drastle to come. And everything that I, the message I wanted to get across, I think he did a very good job of including in the video. So with that, I'll just kick it over to Mr. Herman.
Good evening, everyone. Happy year. Sorry I was late. A few things. I had the pleasure of having a conversation with Mr. Oliver and a few educators at Auburn Junior High School. First, I'll start with discipline. If you have no order in a building, a lot of things can happen. And you can see that with the video. So the discipline has come down tremendously. Last year, in my conversation with Mr. Oliver, I talked to him about how impressed I was that we went in December of the previous year from 126 referrals, 100 and something referrals to 26 referrals in the month of December, which is pretty tough for students with the holidays. And so, that's certainly kudos to the staff, the administration, and the work that they're doing, what they're implementing as far as expectations. the work that they're doing, what they're implementing as far as expectations. In speaking to Mr. Oliver and some educators, talking about the Common Core, ELA and math, we know that that's a major focus. And what he also spoke to us about was social studies, science, collaborating, but not only those subjects, everyone else. In social studies, social studies department has taken the initiative of speaking to the ELA teachers and making sure that they're using the same common language, right? Using the same common language so that the students are getting the same information. We refer to different things, we have the same things with different names, and sometimes that can throw off a student as they're trying to learn. So, one of the things that they're doing right now is aligning and using the same common language, okay? When it comes to special areas, the languages other than English are making sure that the students are reading 20 to 30 minutes a day, a week, at least once in the classroom. And the grammar that they're teaching, when they're teaching Spanish or French, is also reinforcing our English grammar. So that's good. The other thing that's very good and positive at the Auburn Junior High School is the scheduling from 2:20 to 2:50, just what we also have here at the high school. That has proven to be tremendous. For example, a lot of students are staying for extra help and teachers are taking advantage of it. Kids are coming in, asking questions, and that's extremely important and that's moving forward. Extracurricular involvement is very impressive at the Auburn Junior High School. We go from the anti-bully club from 12 students to the National Junior Honor Society at 90, to a whopping 300 students participating in music. I had the pleasure of going to the, to the winter concert and it was great. Mr. Oliver started by talking about, "We're going to get the curtains," and he's excited about that. He welcomed 1,000 community members. The entire auditorium was full, upstairs was also full. I asked him, I said, "Do we really have 1,000?" He said, "Yeah, capacity there will hold 1,000 on the top." So it was great. 300 students performing in the music department. Mind you, there's 600 students in the building. That is excellent. That is excellent. So, again, great job. So now we're talking about parent involvement, right? So, one of the things that Mr. Oliver and the staff has realized that, you know, we all know that in middle school, the parent engagement diminishes, right? More in the elementary, we have it, and then as we get to the middle school, a little less, and certainly, it becomes a little more difficult at the high school. So one of the things that they've realized is that when students participate, you will always have community members coming in, their parents coming in. And so if they continue focusing on creating events and activities where all the students are performing or are taking part in whatever activity, they certainly are going to get more engagement. And so, I was very excited. Me working in a junior high school, you know, to see the big difference. So, we have a major potential at our middle school here, our junior high school, excuse me. We can really soar. We can really go far. And so, we just need to continue to support. He talked about, we all know the spacing, we all know the things that we need to do. And as a board, that's our responsibility to assist them. So, we'll continue doing what we can.
Good evening. So, in anticipation of our upcoming budget season, we'll spend a few minutes just reviewing some statistics and highlights of the last five years' history of our, some budget statistics. So, our general fund budget, which is the budget that the public votes on, that the board approves, in '09-10 was $66.4 million. We've seen basically slight declines, a little bit of an increase, and then last year was our first somewhat more significant increase, up to $68.7 million. And this next chart shows the percentage changes from year to year. So, very minor until this most recent budget year, we saw a 4.7 percent increase. Our enrollment is not really, doesn't look like a clear-cut trend. You can see back in '09-10, 43-72. This is the enrollment on Bed's Day, which is the first Wednesday in October. So, we were declining and then in '11-12, we hit our low point, but the last two years have seen slight increases. So, whether this is a trend or a blip, at this point, we aren't sure, but something that we're definitely keeping an eye on. Looking, we always look at our state aid as a percentage of our total budget. In the past, as recently as '09-10, of our $65 million budget, 53% of it was funded by the state through state aid. That declined each year until we started seeing a slight increase. Now, we're still below where we were in '09-10. We're at 51.8 percent. So, the next slide corresponds to that. As the percentage of state aid goes down, then the percentage of our budget that's funded through property taxes goes up and vice versa. So, you can see last, this most recent year, our property tax as a percentage of our total budget did go down slightly as our state aid percentage went up. So, 41% of our, almost 42% of our budget is funded through property taxes and 52% through state aid. This is a history of our tax levy increases over the past five years. Model increases, 1.3% to 2.8. 3.45 was the one year that we exceeded the property cap. That was the first year that it was in place. And then this most recent year, a 2.5 percent increase, which was below the maximum cap allowed. Property value trends. We had historically always seen an increase, 3% to 5%, or even greater, in our property value, total property value of taxable value of properties within our district. But over the last few years, that trend has changed. And I think we've lagged behind, Upstate New York has lagged behind the rest of the country as far as what's happened with property values. I think the rest of the country saw decreases in their property values a few years earlier than we did. But we are seeing them now, but not anywhere near as drastic as what the rest of the country has seen. So our property, property values have been pretty steady, slightly decreasing over the last few years. And then our actual tax rate, after you take into account the equalization rates in the city and the different towns that are part of our district, once you equalize everyone's rate, this is what our true property tax rates have been for the past five years. Going now to our reserves and fund balances, have what, it's kind of hard to see from this distance, but for the balances as of June 30th, 2013, our most recent fiscal year end, and then the prior year, you can see we have each different category of reserve for the various purposes that we've established those reserves. In total, the reserves and fund balance increased from $6.6 million to $7.9 million. So, we saw a $1.3 million increase last year. And if you remember, the board did approve some planned uses of those reserves. We planned on using some of them next year, in this current year for our budget, and then again next year. So, we spread out the planned use of some of these reserves. But you can see our, you know, the fact that they've gone up was a good, a good sign. So, going into some of the assumptions for next year's budget as we started putting the budget together, I'll just go over a few of the assumptions that we've been working on. I don't know yet what the property tax cap will be for this year, for 14-15. The state hasn't come out yet with the final tax cap. It's 2% or the rate of inflation, whichever is lower. So, at this point, everything I've heard says that it will be between 1.6 to 1.7 percent, not 2%. So, then we take that number that the state tells us and we have to apply the different formulas. We've been through that and we'll go through it again, once we have some more numbers, so I can give you the true tax cap for our district. Our debt service figures into that, we're allowed exemptions, TRS and ERS comes into play. So, there's some different factors going into that. But right now, for a starting point, we're guessing between 1.5 and a 2% property tax increase. We expect to continue to be classified as a high-needs district. We did achieve that recognition last year and we expect that that, there won't be any change in that. State aid, at this point, we're estimating 3% to a 5% increase, possibly more. We really don't know. Next week, the governor's figures will come out and we will know, we'll get a state aid run and we'll see what he is projecting for our state aid. But then, that's what we'll use as our starting point for the budget. But then, the legislature will rework those numbers and potentially they could go up. So, we'll hope for that. But we'll see what the governor proposes next week. And then, another thing to keep in mind, when the governor releases his original budget, he may talk about a 5% increase in state aid statewide overall. But then, we don't know what he may take off the top of that and put it, set it aside in competitive grants. So while he may have a total increase in his budget of 5%, 7% of state aid for schools, it might not, that doesn't mean it'll correlate to that percentage increase for us. We talked about the planned use of the reserves. So, we do plan on using some of the reserves from the previous slide, the ERS reserve, the insurance and the liability reserves that we talked about at last year end. We are anticipating a need for some additional special education teachers as part of our inclusion model, and we'll definitely be talking more about that. We have a preliminary estimate on the TRS contribution rate. So, that's looking like, right now, we pay 16 and 1/4% of our teacher salaries to the teacher's retirement system. And we've been given a preliminary increase of going from 16 and 1/4 to 17 and 3/4%. So that's a 9% increase in the rate. We have our results of our transportation contract that we received last month. And right now, just based strictly on the results that we received, it looks like about a 16 to 17% increase in our transportation costs. But we did meet this week with the vendor and we are working, trying to negotiate some smaller increases. But we definitely are anticipating an increase in transportation costs. We also, because we've had severe cuts in our operating equipment and classroom supplies over the last three years that I've been here, they decreased each year. This year, we are hoping to increase both of those areas moderately. And we also are planning to increase the funding for professional development so that we can spend more on Common Core-aligned curriculum development. So that there, we are anticipating a moderate increase there. But in all other areas, we are just anticipating minimal increases and contractual increases that we're obligated through bargaining, collective bargaining, those will all be factored in. So, those are the assumptions that we're starting with. I originally had some, a slide with some figures for you, with specific numbers. And then, as we talked about it, we decided, at this point, there are a couple of things that changed our thinking about what to present tonight. And one is the governor's figures not coming out until next week. So, at the next meeting, we'll be able to have much better revenue numbers for you. And also, all of the building level budgets and the department level budgets are not due back to the business office until Friday. So, I don't have everyone's budget requests. So, and I fully expect that at least the technology department budget is going to look somewhat different, significantly different next year than what it looks like this year. So, I really do want to put a number out there and then have everyone have that number in their mind, that this is, this is what we need to work with or overcome. So, at the next meeting, we will have more definite numbers to present. Lisa, with the technology, the governor has mentioned putting like $2 billion aside for technology. Do we know anything about that? Are we going to get anything? No, we don't know if it's, you know, for targeted schools, if we'll have to apply for it, if it'll be competitive. We don't know at this point.
Any other questions for Lisa?
Thank you. This is a slide that's not unfamiliar, I know to many of you, and I'm really actually not going to speak about much on here except for a few of the items in that blue box. And I think the goal of this brief conversation would be just to remind us of what the actual ELA shifts look like in action on a daily basis. We're really, I should say, very underway in terms of our implementation of the Common Core with the modules, with springboard, with the work that we're doing here at the high school. And so, I want to just mention briefly those last four shifts on the ELA side. When we talk about that notion of staircase of complexity, we're talking about text. And we're talking about having kids involved in reading very closely, very detailed, challenging text. And it's something that you'd say, "Well, I would assume that they're doing that." But this is an emphasis of the Common Core, text daily. Children interacting with text daily, all right? And in our elementary schools, we're talking about that text in two different ways. One is at a grade level, appropriate text, and the other is at instructional level. So certainly, we know we have kids reading above and below grade level. So, having them have an opportunity to interact at text that's at their independent or instructional level as well. The next one, text-based answers follows just logically, and that is that we're having an opportunity to have students involved in activities that they have to draw on that text to do. If it's to work in groups, if it's to create graphic organizers, if it's to write in journals, if it's to write articles. But getting their answers or their evidence from the text is a really another big shift. And that's the kind of evidence we're looking for when we're visiting classrooms. That last one, or the next one, excuse me, writing from sources likewise follows. Here's where we're actually asking kids to go back into the text to create arguments. That here's my point. Here's the point I want to make and here's how it's supported by text. And oftentimes, when we get into the higher levels, we're talking about multiple texts, not just one. And the last one is the academic vocabulary. This is such an important shift in the way we teach because we no longer give kids a list of 25 words and ask them to define them using the dictionary and then think about those words. But actually, we pull out a few words that we know are going to have length, longevity across multiple texts. And we teach them word families and we teach them prefixes and suffixes so that they can problem-solve within context, figure out some of these important vocabulary words. So the academic vocabulary piece, what it actually looks like in a classroom is a teacher presenting several words, three to five words, that will be key words that the kids might encounter in the text they're about to read and that could cause a stumbling block in the reading. And then those words are likely visited over additional texts or over time in that course. course. So again, just to remind us that these shifts are taking place daily in our classrooms. Those top two shifts that I didn't really discuss just now are shifts that are more unit-based as opposed to lesson. Over time, we should see a balance of literary and informational text. And so that doesn't mean on a daily basis, we have to see kids interacting with different types of text. But over time, in a unit, we should see a balance of texts that might have a more narrative frame to it versus an informational or a nonfiction piece. All of that really heavy focus is on text. What are kids reading? So that's the key question, that's the question we want everybody in the community to be constantly asking is, "What are you reading? What are kids reading and what are they getting from that reading?" So, next meeting, I'll talk a little bit about the math. Any questions or comments? I know we talked a little fast, but...
Thank you.
Six point six, eight minutes workshop meeting, six point one, December 10th, 2013. Mrs. Grover, Mr. Smith, and Mrs. Rice.
Eli, do you have a minute?
I have one.
Yeah, I didn't realize Camille was going to be here. Thanks, Camille.
Okay. We had discussed amending policy number 7670, which has to do with impartial hearing officers and the selection of impartial hearing officers. The changes to the policy are specific to identifying the special education director or the special education office as being responsible to contact the impartial hearing officer and maintaining those appropriate records. The other change delineates that at our reorganizational meeting at the start of the school year, we would be annually appointing the superintendent and identifying the superintendent as the person that would be appointing an impartial hearing officer in the event that we had an impartial hearing. And lastly, in terms of the administrative procedures that do dictate the procedure and process of an impartial hearing, that those procedures would be maintained and followed via the web-based reporting system, which is clearly outlined for us that our Director of Special Education does follow. We also did have a discussion item at the policy committee meeting whereby we were discussing the consideration, really, to really just discuss the consideration and possibility of having employees be residents of a school district, just to discuss this. A board member had asked that we kind of talk about what that might be, what that might look like. We had sought some legal advice on this and while a Board of Education can mandate this as a hiring criteria, that an individual be a resident of the district, this would be challenging when an employee might move out of the district because the only way that any type of disciplinary action could occur is for this requirement to be negotiated and agreed upon by the unions. Our council had indicated that it is unlikely for unions to agree to that, so this would be subject to negotiations. So ultimately, the board can require this. However, there is really not a way to enforce it unless you're going into some sort of litigation. The committee also discussed that if this was something that would be considered to explore, that this could limit the pool of candidates during hiring. And that we are already quite challenged by finding a pool of candidates who are certified in specific tenure areas. So we kind of talked about an example of a recent hire this past summer of a science teacher that was hired up at Auburn High School. There were only two candidates for that job. And that job required two different certifications and in order to meet our highly qualified status that is required by New York State, and both of these candidates did reside outside of the school district. So, a consideration of this type of requirement would limit the district from recruiting and hiring best teachers. So that's kind of a summary of some of our discussion that we had. Anything else?
I have some questions. I think that, I was the one who requested, let's take a look at this. I think that getting legal counsel is putting the cart before the horse. Other municipalities and other school districts do require their employees to live within the district. I do know, I'm aware, that Niagara Falls School District did go through the process of taking a look at and changing over from a situation where none of the district employees lived in the Niagara Falls School District, but that they did change to a policy where they requested that they move into the school district. That changeover happened, people were grandfathered in, it certainly happened through contract negotiations. I don't think anybody would be naive enough to say that you could move forward with this policy. I'd be interested for the policy committee to take a look at the policy that exists in Niagara Falls now, their changeover policy, and the policies of other municipalities that have, that have this kind of policy in place. I do know that the City of Auburn has the policy in place, that employees live in the district. Certainly, we're a long way off from putting something like this in place if we were to decide that that's the way we wanted to go. But the place to start is to look at the other school districts that have these types of policies, other municipalities, how do they enforce it? To seek legal counsel about something that's very specific is premature. And how do the other districts also deal with getting experienced people in their district? We do have a policy for, for one of our district employees already to live within the school district. And we certainly got many experienced applicants for that position, having lived through that situation. Science and math teachers are always hard to recruit regardless of what the situation is. So, a science, a specific example of a single science position is a little, a little far off to shoot down the discussion at this point. I would, I would like for the policy committee to look at other policies if that's possible.
Camille does have some information back from Niagara Falls. She's going to summarize it and then get that out for the board to review.
Okay, great.
So...
So if I could just clarify too, you know that I have weekly meetings with my assistant superintendents every week and Camille and I did discuss this. And I asked her to explore all of the things that could be related to implementing a policy like this. And so I don't want the board to think that administration is trying to block any discussion about any policy that you would like to see move forward in the district. We just feel that it is our responsibility to ensure, again, that you have as much information that we can gather for you to help you come to an informed decision about these things. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Six point one point one, minutes of policy committee meeting.
Did you want to say something?
Just to interject, I would also make a request, if I could, that when you're looking into this, and I don't know how Niagara Falls compares to Auburn in terms of, I don't even know what the population is.
Camille did say they have, what, 13,000 students? Is that correct?
I don't, I don't believe it's anywhere near. I think it's 7,000.
Well, yeah, whatever it is, I think it's important to look at districts that have a comparable situation demographically and economically to Auburn too, as, in addition to Niagara Falls. I just want to make that comment.
And one of the other things we will look at too is, is their report card when it comes to, because that's state information, right? So when it comes to teacher retention, whether or not they have highly qualified teachers, anything over 5% in anyone's estimation, really, if you have more than 5% of teachers in a district that are not highly qualified, that's unacceptable. It's completely unacceptable. And 5% feels like a low bar, sort of when you say it, within 100% sort of calculation. But 5% is not acceptable. And so we would look at that, right? If we were going to look at Niagara Falls, we'd be looking at, what's the percentage of teachers who are highly qualified? What's the turnover rate, et cetera, et cetera? So, so you could have a full picture, right? Even though they have implemented this policy and they, and they may, you may even call them and they may say, "We're successful with this." But we have to look at the data too, in terms of their teacher ranks, and that's public data.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Six point one point one, minutes of policy committee meeting. Do you have a motion?
I don't know.
By Amanda?
Second.
Seconded by Andy, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, carry. Six point two, report on long-range planning meetings held on December 7th, 2013. Ms. Carver, Mrs. Grover, Mr. Robson, Mrs. Rice.
I actually have the meeting minutes up, thanks to Eli. First, we talked a little bit about the West Middle School ad hoc committee meeting, went into depth about enrollment projections, which we saw earlier, how our building space is being utilized, pre-kindergarten classrooms that are being used within our buildings, and also an expansion project from a lone village. We also talked a little bit about the presentation that was shown tonight by Connie and Tim about the summer learning program. I don't know if you guys, anyone else wants to add to that?
No, we talked about many things that were presented here tonight. So, so all of the information has now been presented to the entire board that we discussed in that December meeting.
Okay, thank you. Six point two point one, minutes of long-range planning meeting. Do you have a motion?
No move.
Moved by Dia?
Second.
Seconded by Amanda, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, carry. Six point three, reporting curriculum instruction meetings held on December 7th, 2013. Ms. Carver, Mrs. Grover, Mr. Robson, Mrs. Rice. Several of the things that we talked about has already been discussed this evening as well, has already been presented. Probably the only thing that wasn't, and maybe Lila could talk a little bit about this, was the curriculum council. If you wanted to maybe touch on that, Lila, please.
Actually, Cheryl and I kind of both worked on that together and we sort of wanted to put a new face on what had been our professional development planning committee in the past. And so we have recruited volunteers to be on this committee, representing all the buildings as well as all the secondary departments. We've only had one meeting so far, our next meeting is tomorrow, our second meeting. We're working on a comprehensive curriculum plan for the district, not necessarily developing anything new, but putting a lot of documents that we have floating around in the district together in sort of a concise way. We're also working on our plans for March 21st and so far, so good after one meeting.
I think pretty much everything else, we had talked about technology, we talked about summer school. Dia had mentioned her son was silent reading and we kind of got that explained to us tonight. So, pretty much that was about it as well. Six point three point one, minutes of curriculum instruction committee meeting. Do you have a motion?
No move.
Moved by Dia?
Second.
Seconded by Andy, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, carry. Six point four, report on facilities committee meeting held on January 6th, 2014. Mr. Gene Berko, Mr. Andre, Mr. Robson, and Mr. McCall.
Pretty much Larry Cruchio summed up what we talked about in the facilities meeting. However, there's one point, there was interest before the first of the year about the committee itself touring the buildings, any board members who would wish to partake of that. We're going to set that up at the advice of Larry, we're going to postpone it a little longer so we can get some of these loose ends tied up in the capital project so you can see the results or some of the things that haven't been accomplished at that point. And then we can have a little discussion afterwards. So, that will be coming soon, so.
I want to add one thing, not about the facilities meeting, but I saw something today. I was at Seward Elementary this afternoon and they have their new computer lab being put together today. And Mr. Montgomery was excited and wanted to take me down and show it to me. So it looked great, brand-new computers, we're all set up and they were working on, you know, getting them all hooked in and it was exciting to see it. So it was some of our capital project money, I believe, being put to use that I got to see firsthand today, you know, being installed. So that was exciting to see. Anything else for facilities? Okay. Six point four point one, minutes of facilities committee meeting. Do you have a motion?
No.
Moved by Mike?
Second.
Seconded by Andy, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, carry. Six point five, topics to speak about at future board meetings for education. This was just one kind of through some emails the other day, is talking about maybe bringing another workshop for the board. One of the things that was kind of mentioned is to start talking more about space issues and how can we start to resolve some of these space issues. I'd asked everyone to kind of take a look at their calendars. I know the next couple Tuesdays aren't full, even though we like to do it on Tuesdays. We do have some things coming up on Tuesdays. We wanted to look at another evening. Everybody take a look, see some options here. We've got a Thursday evening, a Wednesday.
How soon are we looking, the end of January?
I would say probably within the next two or three weeks.
Can we start with next Wednesday? Twenty-second?
Wednesday the 22nd.
I have very few free evenings, very few. I keep Tuesdays free.
Tuesdays free. I don't believe we have another Tuesday free, well...
It's hard to get everyone, right?
Yeah, I know, and we may need to go with just a majority if we can.
What's happening on the 21st? Something happening on the 21st?
It's the King Day, right?
No, that's the 21st. But we do not have anything on the 21st. We have a long-range planning committee meeting at 5:00.
We canceled that, actually.
Okay.
Oh yeah, because Kathy's not going to be back.
I'm not, I'm not available next...
Oh, okay.
Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday.
Okay, how about the following week? Can we look at the week of the 27th?
I'm free the 29th.
How about Wednesday, the 29th?
I have that open.
Thursday, the 30th?
You're unavailable that night, okay?
It's all right, I mean, I guess...
By Thursday, the 30th?
Majority rules.
Thursday's actually better for me.
Thursday's fine for me.
How about tentatively Thursday, the 30th? Maybe we could even have a shorter version, maybe do a 6 to 8 instead of a 6 to 9 if people's schedules are really full. Could we pencil that in for right now?
It's for a workshop about space.
Yes.
About building space.
Building space. Yes, start to look at some of our issues.
We have work till 6:00, but I'll probably show up by 7:00.
Okay, why don't we pencil in Thursday, January 30th, 6 to 8 p.m.?
Thornton.
Thornton Ave.
Mm-hmm.
And who will proceed from there. And if we need to reschedule, we'll need to reschedule based on people's availability.
Do you have to have a [inaudible]?
No. I know you won't be here.
Can you just say, we said Thursday, January 30th?
Thursday, January 30th, 6 to 8 p.m. And we'll keep that tentative right now until everyone takes a look at their schedules and see. Okay? Thank you. Dates do we remember?
We have to schedule a long-range planning committee meeting.
Right, we're changing that. Should we do that before the workshop? That would work well for me. 5:00 and the 30th. That's good for me.
I'd like to congratulate Connie on being one of the recipients of the Millennium, or NAACP Millennium Awards. And it's going to be on Wednesday, January 22nd. I encourage all board members to try to make it and honor our superintendent as well as the other folks.
Did we pick a date and time? Did I miss that?
Did we, did we pick a date and time that I missed out for the long-range planning?
Yeah, we're going to do it on the 30th.
Oh, okay, so we're going to do it before.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Seven point zero, end business. Eight point zero, financial matters. Eight point one, 2013, 12:10, tax structures resolved.
Do you have a motion?
Oh, no.
Moved by Amanda.
Seconded.
Seconded by Michael, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, carry.
Eight point two, treasures, your report, carried out in 11:30, 2013.
Do you have a motion?
No move.
Moved by Andy.
Second.
Seconded by Michael, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, carry.
Eight point three, year-to-date budget report, carried out in 11:30, 2014.
Do you have a motion?
Oh, no.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Seconded by Dia, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, carry.
Eight point four, internal spending report, carried out in 12:30, 2014.
Do you have a motion?
Oh, no.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Seconded by Dia, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, carry.
Eight point five, donations.
Do you have a motion?
No move.
Moved by Bill.
Second.
Seconded by Andy, discussion. Again, go ahead.
Thank you, everybody, especially Jason Lesch, his generous donation once again, that former board member who continues to stay interested in education in Auburn School District. We appreciate that very much, as well as the other donors.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, carry.
Eight point six, declaration of surplus property.
No move.
Second.
Moved by Sam, seconded by Dia, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, carry.
Eight point seven, renewable agreement, application secondary to care for essential resources.
Move.
Moved by Bill.
Second.
Seconded by Andy, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, carry.
At this point, the board will consider letting you proceed the consent agenda for item signed 200212.
Do you have a motion?
Oh, no.
Moved by Michael.
What's that?
Seconded by Amanda, discussion.
We have a couple retirements. Firstly, Katie McCollum with 16 years of service as a special education teacher at Seward Elementary School, and Bernie, Bernardine Oliver for 19 years of service as a school nurse at Auburn High School. I worked with both these people, and just fantastic people. Katie, I'm going to miss you. And Bernie, thank you so much for all the care you've given our children over the years in this building, and you're going to be missed both of you, and happy retirement.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, carry.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we return to executive session to finish the conversation from earlier on that contract negotiation.
Move?
Second. He moved, you seconded.
Okay.
Moved by Michael, seconded by Sam, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, carry. Thank you very much.